We have a resolution requesting the Rhode Island General Assembly to expeditiously approve a budget which provides the city of Cranston with approximately 4.1 million in state education aid sponsored by Councilmember Steikos, Councilmember Vargas, Councilmember Donigan, and Councilmember Jermaine. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second. So move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion on a second. Under discussion. Chair recognizes Steve Steikos.
Oh, Councilman Donigan has a second.
Okay, Councilman Donigan.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, it's pretty straightforward. We all know what occurred during the budget and how difficult the process that was. This is simply asking that the money that we unanimously reduced the projected state aid, simply requesting that the General Assembly provide us with the full projected state aid that we were, that was submitted in the governor's budget.
Excellent. Any other discussion?
If I may, Council President.
You may, Councilmember Vargas.
Great, thank you. So the resolution kind of speaks for itself. Obviously, if one of you took the time to read it, you can obviously note, and I think we will, you may all agree or not, that obviously we are hoping that we can, we do receive or we do get that 4.1 million dollars in order to continue to make sure that we meet our contractual obligations as well. We obviously all know that even though this resolution is encouraging us to reach out to our legislators or our legislators just to make sure that they try to be able to deliver as much as possible to us, we also do know, at least I also know, that at the same time, it's all up to the federal government at the very same time. And so I know the legislators do have their hands tied, but this is more making sure that we are also, as council members, trying to make sure that we are all kept accountable and that we try to find that 4.1 million, or at least put that pressure on our legislators, because I'm sure they're feeling it already through, you know, not just educators calling them and parents and everybody else, but it's just making sure that we also reach out to a congressional delegation and know that we need this, and this is definitely a way of formality to make sure that we are with the school department and we understand the need of this. And I think we can all attest that we are all, obviously, need that 4.1 million dollars, which is clearly why it was not adopted into the budget, right? So I welcome, if anybody would like to add their name as a co-sponsor on this, or they're welcome to do this. Again, this is not pointing fingers at anyone, but more so just making sure, like, you know, we are all standing up for a school and a school funding, and it's money that I think a lot of cities and towns are all fighting for the same dollars. So pretty much with this resolution, it's just making sure that we are echoing the voice and the concerns of our educators, of our students, of our families, and our great city of Cranston. And it's really tough, and we don't know what's going to happen on the state side. We also don't know what's going to happen on the federal level, but this is definitely one way or form of making sure that due to the financial stress that has been caused due to COVID, that we try to make sure we push as much as we can to try to get that 4.1 at some point or the other. Thank you.
Thank you. I would definitely accept your invitation to be a co-sponsor of this. Thank you for that. Councilmember Hopkins, I see your hand is up, and then we'll go to Brady, and then to Vicki. You're on mute, Mr. Hopkins.
Is that better?
It is.
We can hear you.
Thank you. Again, I'd like to be a sponsor of this resolution. Thank you for the original sponsors of it. As you know, we've been pushing to get our schools reopened and desperately need this money so that we can pay our bills. So again, I'm happy to sponsor it with you. Thank you, Lamis.
Councilmember Brady, and then Councilmember Vicki.
Thank you, Council President. My only concern, I certainly would also like to be added as a co-sponsor, I've had numerous phone calls with Speaker Mariello, emails, letters to all of our state representatives, so I know they are working on it diligently, but, you know, a resolution also reinforcing it to the community to show that we're working as a group, as a council, certainly couldn't help. So, you know, the efforts are definitely there by all of us. We certainly understand the importance of this funding, and I definitely would also appreciate the opportunity to be added as a co-sponsor. Thank you for bringing it to us.
Council Vice President.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, you know, as Finance Chair and the person who had to make the difficult decision that we not include that monies in the budget until we had it appropriated properly, I do support the resolution since it's an ask. We're asking the legislature to do what we wanted them to do. It's not their fault that they haven't been able to do something at this point in time because they've been waiting on the federal government, they've had COVID issues at the State House, it's just, you know, it's just been a very difficult time. But when we made the decision not to enter into, you know, a deficit situation, it was with the hope that we would be able to get some or all of this money back for the school department. So I would be glad to co-sponsor it with you, Lamis. I think the, you know, it's just our voice asking the legislature to do what they can. Obviously, they have issues because they have to deal with the federal government on this issue as well. So, and we will send, we send in our recommendation, and hopefully they'll be able to accommodate.
Councilmember Paploskas.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Councilmember Vargas, and everybody for sponsoring this and putting this in. I know we're all anxiously waiting for the budget to be completed up there. We haven't even got our car tax bills yet, and we need to get those out as soon as possible. So I'm in full support of this. I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor as well, if you'd have me, and I appreciate all the hard work from everybody on this. Thank you.
Councilmember Vargas, should your hand raised?
I did. Thank you so much. Thank you. Again, thank you for teaching every one of you for being listed, and I welcome all of you, obviously, to co-sponsor this, and please, Councilman Donigan and Steikos, I don't want to take away from the credit for any one of them as well, because we all worked on this. One of the things I was just going to ask is if, can we send a copy of this resolution to our legislators at all, or how does that process work?
Yeah, so typically, what we would do at the end of the resolution is we would put the line, please, upon passage, please forward to the members of the Cranston delegation. I would entertain that. Once we get to the point where we'll discuss, as a friendly amendment, to add that to the, to the end of the resolution.
All right, great. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll just say, you know, we've all been in this dilemma since the budget cycle started and finished. We're still in it. Doesn't look like we're going to have an answer until September. Hopefully, the state legislature hears us. Like Councilmember Brady, I've been in constant contact with members of the legislature discussing this matter. It's been top of mind for most every Cranston resident I've spoken to in the last few months. It's something we're going to have to continue to work on, and I'm happy that we're going to work together to try to ask the legislature to give us the funding that was initially in the budget. With that, I want to say a friendly amendment to add at the end of the resolution, on passage, please forward to the members of the Cranston House and Senate delegation.
So moved.
Motion. Second.
Second.
Second. It's a friendly amendment, so I'll take a, Madam Clerk, please take a long amendment.
Councilmember Steikos?
Yes.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
Councilmember Jermaine?
Yes.
Councilmember Brady?
Yes.
Councilmember Donigan? Councilmember Donigan?
He's on mute. Please, yes?
Yes.
Councilmember Paploskas?
Yes.
Council Vice President Vicki?
Yes.
Council President Freylo?
Yes. Now, on the resolution as amended.
Motion approved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing done. Clerk, please take the role, and the motion is amended, and the resolution is amended.
Councilmember Steikos?
Yes.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
Councilmember Jermaine?
Yes.
Councilmember Donigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Brady?
Yes.
Councilmember Paploskas?
Yes.
Council Vice President Vicki?
Yes.
Council President Freylo?
Yes. Motion passes. Resolution passes. The next resolution is a resolution urging the General Assembly to fully fund state education funding formula at the fiscal year 2020 projected levels to support total state aid to all governments in the same aggregate levels as in fiscal year 2020. This was, thank you, I just wanted to explain this, submitted to the mayor by the League of Cities and Towns. He requested it called on the docket in order to get it before the council. I put myself in his sponsor just to get it on the docket, just for to anyone else. This was not a competing resolution to the one that was already put on. The mayor requests this go on, and now it's on. A motion approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Under discussion.
I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor, Council President.
Councilmember Steikos, you're up first.
I just had a question. Is Director Strom on this call?
He is. Director Strom.
Or Director Strom. Could you just go through the different types of state aid and their status as of now, what the state has sent us, and what's happening?
You're on mute, Director Strom.
Ron, how are you going to put that in the synag?
So Coco is very excited about the Cranston City Council meeting.
Is Bob with us?
He is.
We need an interpreter for the talk.
Director Strom, you're up. You're up.
Councilman?
There you are. Good evening, Director Strom.
Thank you. I was hitting star seven by mistake. Sorry.
That's all right.
Here, a couple of things. The motor vehicle excise tax, we've received, normally, we get it quarterly. They sent us one-third of a quarter. So instead of getting roughly 2.5 million, we received in July, 840,000. We're going to be receiving another, say, 840,000 in August, and another 840,000 in September. So they're spreading it over a period of time. The pilot is being paid, now, we budgeted around 4.9 million. They gave us 401,000, so roughly 1/12, and it's going to be on a monthly basis. The school aid-
They usually give us that all at once, is that right?
The pilot, yeah, that is correct. Yes. And it usually comes in in July and August, but this year, because of their financial issues and not having a budget also, they're doing it over a period of once a month or 1/12 as an allocation. The school aid, they're basing the school aid at about 98.75, 65% of last year's allocation. So for instance, last year, hold me, hold on one second, please. Last year, for the month of July, we got 1,643,780. This year, we received 1,605,05. So it's roughly 38,000 less than last year. For the month of August, I have a figure that we're going to be receiving, instead of 5,733,817, which was last year's figure, we're going to receive 5,599,256. So-
Sorry, Director, can I interrupt you? Can you repeat that last number? Sorry, I'm just taking notes.
Yeah. Last year, we received 5,733,817. This year, for the month of August, we'll be receiving 5,599,256, which is 134,561 less than last year. So, one other thing, too. When I did the analysis, as Councilman Steikos mentioned, we usually get the pilot all up front in August, say, or July, August. This year, we only received the 400,000. So we were short in the month of July by 4.4 million dollars from what we normally would receive. On the motor vehicles, like I mentioned, we would have gotten 2,523 for the quarter. We got 840,000. That's a shortfall of 1,683. So if you combine those two together, they add up to over $6 million that we got less this year than last year for the same period of time in July. Compare in July of '20 to July of '19. So, one of my, you know, responsibilities and one of the things that I've been spending a lot of time on, obviously, is cash flow, because I'm concerned that they are sending money, but they're sending it in in different increments, and it's not up to the standards that we received last year.
Councilwoman Steikos.
Bob, was there any explanation? I mean, they seem to be level funding the motor vehicle tax. Well, that's one question. Is that based on an increased, well, the state is increasing the amount of the motor vehicle tax it pays every year? Is that, is that number that they're now paying monthly rather than quarterly, is that based on the increased number or last year's lower number?
No, it's based on the state statute, the law from last year. It hasn't been determined. As you know, I believe Governor Ramondo wanted to change the allocation this year from what Speaker Mariello had in his plan. So that has not been determined this year at all. So basically, what they're giving us is what we received last year, but it's not being paid on a quarterly basis. It's being paid over a monthly basis. So until they decide, you know, it's going to be difficult for us, and we, we've had some discussions of how we're going to send out motor vehicle bills at this point. We're contemplating whether we should wait till September. If they do get back together, I'm afraid also, I know Council President Farina said that, I also heard it could be October. So it's, you know, you're looking at 10.8 million dollars in tax bills that are kind of like right now on hold. But then we're considering we may only, we may send them out rather than on a quarterly basis, on a third, a third, a third. So, right now, we're just waiting to see what happens, I guess, for September. But if I would, my opinion is we shouldn't wait longer than September.
My other question is, I mean, given that they're, they're kind of level, they're assuming level funding in their payments on the pilot program and the motor vehicle tax, what is the reason that they're paying slightly less on the education aid? Is that a reason given for that?
They're using the funding formula, but they're also using, I believe, a, let's see, a 97.85 percentage, and that's done by the RIDE. I don't really have an explanation of why it's not just dollar for dollar. I have not received that information. But I can tell you that when I go on my calls on Tuesday mornings with the League and all the finance directors, I know some communities are, you know, including ourselves, are not too happy with what we're receiving.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other questions? And I heard Councilmember Paploskas wanted to be a sponsor. Anyone else like to be a sponsor on this?
I have a question.
Councilmember Brady?
Yes.
Councilmember Hopkins, Councilmember Vicki. Someone had their question. I think that was Councilmember Jermaine?
Yes. Can you please give a little explanation about the formula, the state formula?
You want us to explain the state fair funding formula to you?
Yeah.
That's, Director Strom, I'll let you take a, try that one.
All I'm going to say, thanks, Council President.
Yeah, I wasn't going to try to butcher my way through it. It's, it's, it's a very extensive formula that they use to figure out state aid based on population density, school size, number of schools, a whole bunch of stuff that goes into it.
Yeah.
Another formula, it was because you asked, so I think it wasn't the same formula.
I'm not quite sure what you're asking for.
Is the formula has changed? That's why I was asking.
So you're questioning, you're questioning the change in state aid year over year?
Yeah, it's just changed on that.
Yes, I think, I think Councilmember Jermaine is trying to ascertain why we think the change has happened year over year.
Well, I think it has to do with the population at the school department, the number of students, I believe. The monies go with the student, so to speak, and it's looked upon as a whole of the state through RIDE, but then it's based on our, so to speak, data that's a percentage of it. That's the way I understand it.
Yeah, so Councilmember Jermaine, they haven't changed the fair funding formula. They're just shorting us the money that they would have sent us if they flat funded us from last year because they don't know what the number is going to be. I think that's probably the-
That's why I want to know. Thank you.
Yeah, that's probably the simplest way to say it.
Yeah, that's correct. Thank you.
No problem. Any other questions? Hearing done. Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Steikos?
Yes.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
Councilmember Jermaine?
Yes.
Councilmember Donigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Brady?
Yes.
Councilmember Paploskas?
Yes.
Council Vice President Vicki?
Yes.
Council President Freylo?
Yes. Moving on to the Finance Committee. Council Vice President Vicki.
Thank you, Council President. First, we had 7-20-02. I'm going to withdraw that. The administration's going to handle that internally, so that can be withdrawn. Next, we have resolution authorizing real estate tax abatements.
I'm saying a motion approved.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Under discussion. Hearing done. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Steikos?
Yes.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
Councilmember Jermaine?
Yes.
Councilmember Donigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Brady?
Yes.
Councilmember Paploskas?
Yes.
Council Vice President Vicki?
Yes.
Council President Freylo?
Yes.
Next, we have a resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax abatements. There's only $400 involved, $426 involved here.
I'm saying a motion approved.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Under discussion. Hearing done. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Steikos?
Yes.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
Councilmember Jermaine?
Yes.
Councilmember Donigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Brady?
Yes.
Councilmember Paploskas?
Yes.
Council Vice President Vicki?
Yes.
Council President Freylo?
Yes.
Next, we have a resolution authorizing tangible tax abatements. They are listed in there. If you have any questions.
I'm saying a motion to approve.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Under discussion. Hearing done. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Steikos?
Yes.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
Councilmember Jermaine?
Yes.
Councilmember Donigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Brady?
Yes.
Councilmember Paploskas?
Yes.
Council Vice President Vicki?
Yes.
Council President Freylo?
Yes.
Next, we have tax interest waiver, the approvals. Did we do the approvals, Council President?
No, we did not. Motion to approve the tax interest waiver approvals. A motion.
Motion approved.
Second. Under discussion. Hearing done. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Steikos?
Yes.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
Councilmember Jermaine?
Yes.
Councilmember Donigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Brady?
Yes.
Councilmember Paploskas?
Yes.
Council Vice President Vicki?
Yes.
Council President Freylo?
Yes.
Last, we had tax interest waiver denials, very small dollars involved here, just hundreds of dollars.
I'm saying a motion to approve the tax interest waiver denials.
Motion approved.
Second. I have a second. Under discussion. Hearing done. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Steikos?
Yes.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
Councilmember Jermaine?
Yes.
Councilmember Donigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Brady?
Yes.
Councilmember Paploskas?
Yes.
Council Vice President Vicki?
Yes.
Council President Freylo?
Yes. Under the Claims Committee, you can see the claims that have been settled out. If anyone has any questions. Hearing done. We'll move on to public hearings. This is a section of the docket open to any matter. I will allow Ms. Russinger and her 5G group to go first. So, Ms. Russinger, if you want to, I know you have an order you wanted to speak in, please feel free to let them come up in the order of what you, what you choose.
Yes, thank you very much. We are asking C.C. Dusette, who is an expert witness from Massachusetts, to speak first, and then our members from 5G Rhode Island will speak. Thank you.
Just, Council President, just a point of information.
Sure.
The person that's going to speak is declaring themselves as an expert. I, you know, we don't, I don't know that we will just accept that. That's for the, you know, the council to decide how to treat the testimony given, but just for informational purposes, just because someone says that they're an expert, we haven't qualified that person as such formally for the meeting, so we can take whatever weight from the person has to offer. But if they want to be qualified as an expert, I would think we'd have to have the solicitor lay the foundation for that.
Thank you, Council Vice President Vicki. Normally, I would agree with you if we had some kind of resolution before us this evening or ordinance. We don't. This is purely informational for Councilman Vargas, so I think tonight, I'll just allow them to make their testimony and tell us why they stand where they stand.
That's fine.
As, because as this is a public hearing, expert testimony really weighs no more than a regular person's testimony.
Just through the chair?
Yes, Attorney First of all.
Yes, this was on our council member communications and wasn't related to a resolution or ordinance. So typically, we have not allowed the public to speak on a purely council member communication basis.
Yeah, but this is under public hearings, which is open docketed matters, so they can talk about whatever they like. So this is something that, but the rule is we, because if it's open, because of meetings, we won't be able to vote on it or take any action on the matter tonight. I'm just here to listen.
Fair enough.
Okay, may I begin then?
You may. Name it as is for the record.
All right. Thank you so much for allowing us to come in and speak tonight. And I don't even call myself an expert. I just think that I've-
Your name, please?
Oh, C.C. or Cecilia Dusette from Ashland, Massachusetts. And I've just gotten a head start on most people on the wireless radiation and safe technology conversation. And with your permission, may I share my screen for a couple minutes?
Sure.
Okay. If the host would enable me, that would be terrific. I'm not quite sure. Spotlight video? There we go. Thank you so much. Okay. It's still saying host disabled participant screen sharing. Sometimes there's a little triple dot next to a person's name, and you might be enabled, be able to enable it that way. Yeah, I'm nuts. I'm not seeing that dot. I'm sorry. Okay.
Try it now.
Okay. You got it. Thank you so much.
I figured it out.
I know. We're all learning with this Zoom. Okay, so let me put this in slideshow mode. Okay, so once again, thank you very much for inviting me in. Okay, so once again, thank you very much for inviting me in. As Sheila mentioned, I'm from Massachusetts and perhaps like many of you, several years ago, I had no idea that there was even a question to be asked about technology safety. And I am a technical and professional writer by trade, and I used to run our local education foundation here in Ashland. And we kept hearing about this 21st century classroom and how our children were going to need all this new wireless technology to succeed in life. So I spent eight years bringing technology into Ashland Public Schools. And then one night, a book group, a girlfriend of mine who's an electrical engineer, tipped us off that there could be something up biologically with wireless technology. So that was my entry point into this conversation. And so I started doing my due diligence, and if you do a cursory search as Wi-Fi, say, you will indeed find studies that were done by and large by industry under conditions that would show no harm. But once you get past that cursory search, you will discover there are literally thousands of studies all over the world, linking today's wireless technology with a whole host of illnesses that some of our other guests tonight will discuss with you. So to keep things straight, I built myself a very simple research repository called Understanding EMFs. And anybody is welcome to mine that. I also helped Ashland Public Schools become the first in the nation to start taking precautionary measures. And in all of our classrooms, we now have a sign called Best Practices for Mobile Devices. I have also been fortunate to align with many of the world's leading scientists and doctors on this issue. And we've built a little nonprofit out of Europe called Wireless Education. And we have the training built where anybody from the public can take it in less than a half an hour and understand the science, the risks, what other countries are already doing, because we are way behind the eight ball here in the U.S., and safe technology solutions. So as we go through our talks tonight, just please bear in mind that the message is not no technology, because we love our technology. But it's high time we learn the truth about the risks and then start making plans towards safe technology. And on that note, I have recently helped to co-found Massachusetts for Safe Technology, which also has a lot of really good information in it. Once, uh, I brought this to Senate President Karen Spilka here in Massachusetts, she introduced legislation on my behalf. And we have 20 bills in this session. Three of them are still advancing, even during this unusual time with the pandemic and racial justice. They're finally starting to see just how seriously the wireless radiation issue ties in. So I also wanted to mention that I have been brought in to speak with others in Rhode Island, uh, including Senator Whitehouse. And if any of you know Anna Esten on his team for healthcare, or Karen Bradbury for energy and environment, they've been fully debriefed on this issue. Rhode Island Department of Health, I have met a couple of times with Michael Burns, who is the environmental epidemiologist there. And with great thanks to Stephen Dahl, who may be speaking tonight, he's with one of the citizen groups and brought me in for that. Senator Elaine Morgan actually had me come in for a press conference when I had the privilege of hosting one of the world's leading experts on this, Dr. Annie Sasco, who served for decades with the World Health Organization. We came down and helped Senator Morgan with the press re- uh, press conference on this. And then we have hosted screenings of an award-winning film called Generation Zapped. So although this may be your first introduction to this, please know others have been working behind the scenes on this. And we hope that you will take the time to do your due diligence on this. But one thing that helps us to see, kind of in our own devices, what this technology is, if anybody happens to own an iPhone, and if you have it with you right now, I'll walk you through just a quick set of instructions. We're seeing what the legal fine print in our own devices is telling us. And it certainly exists for other devices too, but I can teach you quickly how to get into the iPhone. So once you are in an iPhone, if you go into Settings, from Settings, you just scroll down and hit General. And if it's an older phone, you would then go up to the top and hit About. Most people have a newer phone today, so from General, you just go straight down to the bottom of the list, and I think second from the bottom, you'll see Legal and Regulatory. And then there's a list there after you hit Legal and Regulatory. And at the bottom of that little list, about five or six items down, you'll see RF Exposure. That's radio frequency radiation or two-way microwave radiation that the industry and that disclaimer politely calls energy. But what that legal fine print tells us is a couple of really important things. One, keep this device X amount of distance from your body, or you may exceed the FCC limits for public radiation exposure. And as some of our other guests tonight will help us to understand, they never safety tested those limits before they brought it to market. The fine print also tells us to use a hands-free option, because by simply holding that device in your hand, you are now getting microwave radiation from five or six separate antennas that are constantly pulsing to make a handshake with the nearest cell tower or router. And so when I was starting to learn about this, I kept thinking, surely somebody's got our backs on this if it's as bad as all this science is showing us. And then in 2015, Harvard's Law School Center for Ethics put out this report called Captured Agency, how the federal communications industry is dominated by the industries it presumably regulates. And what Captured Agency did for me is it gave me that missing piece, and I had this moment where I went, oh, so they're telling us this is basically the big tobacco playbook all over again, but worse, because it's completely invisible. We can't see it, smell it, hear it, touch it. But a lot of people feel it. Once they get educated, they start recognizing that their symptoms line up with the science on microwave sickness. And then other things for our municipalities to understand is that years ago, Lloyds of London, SwissRE, AM Best, all these major insurers, put exclusions in their policies. They don't cover damages from radio frequency. So when our towns start signing contracts for smart meters or for cell towers, and now these 5G small cells, we assume that liability as a municipality. Um, and then, you know, there are all sorts of lawsuits going on right now. The FCC and the industry had a chance to look at the real science and fix those public radiation guidelines, and instead they just said, ah, it's all fine, we'll keep doing business as usual. And, um, the FDA seems to be a bit of a captured agency today too. And there are some pretty good reasons we could discuss it another time there. So for those of us who are still learning what 5G is, it's simply fifth generation technology. So right now, your cell phone probably works off of 3G and 4G. Those are the big macro cell antennas that started off in industrial parks, 300 feet in the air. And as you've all seen, they've been encroaching closer and closer to where we live and work. And so long as you can paint it the color of a building or make it look like a fake tree or, you know, the industry's been very persuasive in getting those into our communities. So 5G, the industry is spinning up, that we will have faster downloads. And if you start noticing what the industry is doing, they're transitioning a lot of their revenue stream to entertainment. Right? So the telecom companies themselves are starting to buy out the entertainment companies. That's part of where they hope to make their money. These new antennas cannot operate unto themselves, so everything that we have already existing for 3G and 4G will stay in place. If we had time, we would look at the electromagnetic spectrum, and you would see that those older signals use longer waves. All that's left are these crummy little millimeter waves. And they don't do well traveling far or going through objects. So all of the 5G small cells that are coming in won't replace 3G and 4G. They will piggyback on them. And they are expecting to put these up every two to 12 houses, so we can all have a cell tower right in front of our home. So here we are. It can't go through objects, and oftentimes the industry comes in and just starts clearcutting the trees or lopping off the tops of them, which is really bad for our environment. And their goal, again, is to have millions of these, every two to 12 houses in the public accessway. And in, you know, as they've always done, they go to where they can make the best revenue, which is our densely populated areas. They still haven't delivered high-speed broadband out to our rural communities. And so now their solution is to start hanging these 5G satellites that will pulse this toxic radiation from the sky 24/7. So we can't get away from it, so we may as well stop where we are and figure out how to get to safe technology. And this link, and I'll send my presentation in, so you can all drill down into these links. But this is a four-minute clip of Connecticut's U.S. Federal Senator Blumenthal talking to the industry in a commerce hearing, saying, so how much money have you guys invested in independent science to prove that 5G is safe before it comes to market? And both of these two guys who head up the CTIA and other organizations said, uh, well, basically, we don't know about any testing. So I'll do a quick science overview. I know some of the others will speak to this, but because tonight's topic is 5G, please know that Dr. Martin Paul is a professor emeritus out of Washington University. And for a long time, the industry spun it that, oh, well, you know, we don't have any mechanisms of harm identified, so just keep doing what we've been doing. Well, now we have at least eight distinct types of harm that we know scientifically we can prove. And that includes cancers for children and adults, DNA mutations, which is the roadmap to grow a proper child, and we wonder why our kids are falling apart these days. Infertility is huge. We as a nation are down 50% on our sperm count. And where's everybody carrying their cell phone or putting their laptops? Neurological damage, these skyrocketing rates that we have of anxiety, depression, suicidal ideation, blood-brain barrier compromises. Again, all of this is documented in the scientific literature. Cell death, oxidative stress, which is the precursor to most diseases, hormone disruption, excessive calcium, uh, and signaling disruption. So we are bioelectrical beings, and this constant bombardment of billions of cycles a second of microwave radiation is really doing a number on us. And children are not just little people, they are especially vulnerable. And if you look at this graphic on the right here in the middle, on the far right, we see an adult holding a phone up to their head, and we see that the radiation penetrates our brain through our skull about a third of the way. When you expose a 10-year-old to a cell phone, it's going about two-thirds of the way over the brain. When you expose it to a small child, it goes all the way across the brain. And children's brains absorb more radiation than you and I, because they have a higher water content, and their skulls are not fully formed, so it's thinner, and all that radiation gets in and does its damage so much more easily. So the WHO, a lot of people will say, well, what does the World Health Organization say? And there, you know, as we've seen, there's corruption at all levels, but at least in 2020, the WHO has reopened their investigation, because the science has become so clear. So we have been told, as public servants for a very long time, that this is coming and there's nothing you can do about it. But that's all we've heard from industry, and that actually is not even true. So I hope you will look at this issue with a very open mind and perhaps take some encouragement from what others are already doing right now. In June, the city of Boston, their legal team filed a public comment with the FCC saying that we believe the public, we don't trust those radio frequency exposure limits. We need to do something about this. Burlington, Massachusetts, and this is something your team might want to consider. They formed a small cell policy committee, because they had more questions than Verizon would answer for them. So they polled experts from all of their town boards, and in the end, they came up with a small cell policy. And they addressed the typical legal things, like any small cell that you bring in has to blend in with the environment. It cannot conflict with the Americans with Disabilities Act, because although they call them small cells, and they're only about the size of a backpack, well, they come with a refrigerator-sized box or two somewhere on the ground to power that and to have backup in it. So don't be deceived by the word "small." The harm is not small. So Burlington also put in their policy that you can't just come in and drop and run this equipment, as they've been prone to do. You have to come back every year and recertify that it's still viable in your community. And they don't have that expertise on staff, so Burlington would have to keep an expert on retainer. So they told Verizon and any other vendor that if you bring these in, if we give you an approval, you have to come back every year, recertify, and you have to pay for that recertification process. So that night, the Verizon lawyer was there when they ratified this. And they said, uh, well, our client doesn't wish to set precedent, so we respectfully withdraw our small cell applications. So don't think that because the industry tells you it's so, that that's exactly what's going on. And now there's a national group called 5gcrisis.com, and they've taken the Berkeley small, or the Burlington Small Cell Ordinance, and they have put it into a template that any municipality can start looking at. Here in Massachusetts, Bedford, Lincoln, Andover have already adopted the Burlington Small Cell Ordinance. And then just this summer, I think it was actually May, Easton, Connecticut banned 5G outright. And just this summer, Hawaii County adopted a resolution to ban 5G, because they've never proven it's safe, and all this other science is showing it's very harmful. And, um, one of the things that is most promising for our entire country is that we got a law passed in New Hampshire in seven months. I was brought up to testify. We got the retired president of Microsoft Canada to testify, because he is an expert and a whistleblower. And we got one of the world's leading scientists from McGill University to come down and testify, along with well-informed citizens. Passed the House, they got it through the Senate, and Governor Sununu signed it into law, and they are today actively investigating the health and environmental impact of wireless technology and especially 5G. Senator Anderson in Oregon is a retired public health nurse. And when her constituents brought her the science, it didn't take her long to get to the bottom of it. She introduced an emergency bill that got passed into law. And now the Oregon Health Authority is examining the non-industry-funded science, especially as it pertains to children and children in the learning environment. So these states.
Mr. President, may I enter seat for one second?
You may, Director Perlo.
I'm sorry, I, I don't want to cut anything short, but I know the Diversity Commission study is supposed to be reviewed tonight, and I know we're kind of running behind schedule already. So I'm not sure if we can maybe just curtail this a little bit with your, with your approval. I just want to let you know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Perlo. Yeah, I, I must just say, I've let you go on a little bit beyond the four-minute timeline, because you know, you, it seems like you do have something important to tell us.
I can wrap up pretty quickly here. Sure. So their reports will come out this fall, and that should be some really good information for all of us. So perhaps as next steps, um, when Burlington was investigating this, I was brought in to do a four-town presentation for probably an hour, hour and a half. I would be honored to come back and give a more in-depth examination with you of this. In the meantime, there's some really good resources that we have today that I didn't have a half a dozen years ago. There's an award-winning film called Generation Zapped with world-leading experts, as well as people who've become ill. Uh, the little sign we have in Ashland is actually featured in the film. And this film was chosen as part of the United Nations Film Festival. I've also had the privilege of developing a nonprofit out of Europe called Wireless Education, where we distilled this down into half-hour courses online, so we have the training available for the general public. And then if you want to go dig around, you're welcome to start as a launch point in my research repository. And I tried to put myself into your shoes, so I did a page on municipal leaders, you know, what are you hearing from the industry? What's the other side of the coin? And you can just start digging around there if you want to use that as a launch point. So, thank you. You can find me at Massachusetts for Safe Technology or through Wireless Education.
Council President, if I may, real quickly?
You may.
For lack of time. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Russiger and Sheila, thank you so much again for this presentation. Definitely a lot of information there, a lot of knowledge. Definitely, you can email that, if you have not done so already, uh, to the clerk, and she'll be, she'll make sure that she can disseminate that to each and every one of us. Um, I just, again, you had reached out to me asking, uh, about the 5G network and the utility boxes going up on the poles and your concern about that, and definitely there's a lot of information that you just provided us this, this evening. I just wanted to let you know that one of the things that I've done is that I've reached out to the. out to the administration, and so they're going to look into this as well, and perhaps, you know, down the line, whether maybe the next meeting or the next one after, perhaps we can have our city solicitor also weigh in on this, just so they can kind of give us some information based on the information you've provided tonight. And so I'm not sure if that's something that would be okay with you. Definitely a lot of electromagnetic field information and the impact and what it does, whether it's adults and our children. And correct me if I'm wrong, I think the point also here, Sheila, aside from the health risk, I think your point when you had reached out to me was the amount of 5G network boxes popping up in the utility polls on this subject matter. So your concerns are pretty much as to whether or not what we're able to do to regulate such or not. And so that's what I gathered from some of the information that you have provided over to me, and I did talk to the administration, and I just told them that they can definitely do some homework and some digging on this, or if you're okay with having the administration and our city solicitor take a look at this, and definitely circle back. I think that would be a start.
Okay, I appreciate that very much. And we still have about five more people who have prepared oral testimony. Will we be able to go ahead now?
Um, I would say-
I would refer to the Council President.
Yeah, I would say you'd have to keep it in the four-minute time limit that we have for public comment. I'll let Mr. Sett go a little long just because, you know, she had a presentation and she, you know, was prepared to share with us, so I would just ask that the next few people just keep it concise, because based on Mr. Sett's presentation and Councilmember Vargas's comments, it sounds like this may be something that we'll circle back to at a Public Works meeting, once we have time to kind of look at the information, digest it, have the solicitor review it, and then get the city to kind of work with us on it. So anyone who wishes to speak, by all means, just try to keep it concise and clear and-
Thank you, thank you very much.
On another meeting.
So Kendra Morales is up next.
Good evening, Kendra. Name and address, for record.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm sorry, just trying to get situated here. Yes, my name is Kendra Morales. Address is 65 Metropolitan Ave. I first wanted to say thank you so much, Council President Farina, for even allowing us to speak tonight. So I will keep this short, but I did have something written down, and I'd like to say as much as I can in four minutes. Thank you, Council, for hearing us out. As I mentioned in my written testimony, it was early April when I first noticed a 5G infrastructure deployed on a telephone pole in the parking lot of the Cranston West High School. So as C.C. Duchet went on, "Science does prove that our public health and environments are in jeopardy from the excessive exposure of these wireless technologies, and it will be getting worse with 5G." As well, she mentioned, every two to 10 houses, they will be deployed on telephone poles and light posts in our front yards, and in schools and hospitals, pretty much everywhere throughout Rhode Island, they're popping up. And just so happens, now they're in Cranston. The radiation is harmful, and the research is overwhelming. So of course, mainstream media is not focusing in on that, but if you push aside some of that and really dig deep, you can find some really shocking information and scientific research. Even our firefighters are aware of this. So according to the 2004 Resolution from the International Association of Firefighters, they oppose the use of fire stations as base stations for these towers and antennas until a study is done on the health effects of exposure and is conducted that it's proven to be non-hazardous to human health. The American Cancer Society cannot even make the claim that cell towers and this technology are proven safe, and so the state of Rhode Island is taking a risk. We are one of the top states in the U.S. with the most cancer cases for whatever environmental reasons, and economic gain and having the title of a high-tech state, as Governor Raimondo says, will come with a cost to public health of Rhode Islanders. Council President Farina, we know that public safety appears to be a priority to you, and just to make you aware, the well-being and health of Cranston residents is at risk. Our trees are a topic which C.C. brought up. That means all these 5G towers have to talk to each other, so trees will get cut down, and also, they get damaged from radio frequencies. And Councilman Steve Stychos, you introduced the wonderful tree planting program intended to increase Cranston's tree canopy. This technology will counteract those efforts. Also, the saying, "No bees, no food." Scientific studies have found that radio frequency exposure causes behavioral problems on bees, such as disturbance, aggression, and leaving their hive locations. These installations also invade personal choice. If we're privileged to do so, we choose to buy a home in far distance from a cell tower, no matter how big or small it is. As of now, we can choose how much exposure we have in our home and in our environment, and 5G will take that away from us. So I am personally grateful for the safety of my Cranston neighborhood. I go to bed at night knowing that my children are exactly where they need to be, safe in our home, and I'm not willing to lose that. In fact, I don't think anyone here should be willing to lose that either. You know, this is not, we're not focusing on one street, one community, one neighborhood. This is going to affect my family just as much as it will affect yours. Councilman Ken Hopkins, you may not remember, but we met one time. You donated your late sister's bedroom set to the nonprofit organization that I opened up, and we shared stories about my children and your grandchildren. And, you know, I know you pride yourself on a family man, so we all need to start asking ourselves, how are we going to protect our family from this exposure? We have zero control over what telephone poles get flagged for this, and that means a wireless transmitter pulsing, these microwave radiations, could end up being deployed right outside of my or your bedroom window, or even worse, our children or our grandchildren's bedroom window. So this is not just a community problem, it's a city and statewide problem. It's also a public health and environmental problem that does need to be taken seriously. Scientists around the world are calling for a moratorium on 5G, and now us here in Cranston are as well. And so just to conclude, budgets and economic gain are so important to this city, but please consider public health a priority as well. Thank you so much for your time and allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Kendra. All right. Anyone else to speak on any matter tonight?
Yes, Claire Stott-Muller is the next speaker from our group.
Hello, I'm Claire Stott-Muller. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. I am Claire Stott-Muller of 963 Seven Mile Road. I've been a Cranston taxpayer since 1993. Good evening, and be assured that I won't be covering the same points as my colleagues. I'm going to be talking about loss of property value and thereby the loss of tax revenue for Cranston. Throughout the past year, I've listened to dozens of lectures by prominent scientists, medical doctors, and attorneys on 5G, and convinced of the absolute threat of harm to me and the creatures with whom I share my two acres and the loss of my property's value, I contacted in February Mayor Fong and Cranston's council members. Councilman Stychos did respond by saying he was receptive to knowing more on the subject, suggested I submit a sample moratorium, and kindly connected me with several of the Cranston residents who had also voiced their objections to the so-called "small site antennas." In May, I telephoned several city hall offices in an attempt to determine the application process for permitting of WTFs, the wireless telecommunications facilities. I was repeatedly told that no permitting had ever gone through City Hall and that I should contact National Grid, which I have since learned is owned by National Grid PLC in the UK. On June 5th, I hand-delivered a very thorough nine-page cease and desist notice, signed also by two other Cranston residents, Kendra and Sheila. I returned to City Hall after mailing a copy by certified mail to confirm that the cease and desist was on the appropriate desk. I also emailed the document to every council member and the solicitors. I received no response. Several weeks later, I contacted council members, and Mr. Stychos and Mr. Brady replied they'd never seen it nor were aware of its delivery. Then Mr. Brady advised me to contact the solicitors, and Solicitor Rossin told me succinctly that this is a matter for the Public Utilities Commission. The PUC's engineer, Ken McCarthy, told me on August 6th that, quote, "The PUC does not regulate small cell wireless or any wireless," unquote. However, the audio recording of the 2017 Hearings on the Small Sighting Act reveals that then-administrator for the DPUC, Mackie McCleary, was instrumental in advocating on behalf of the telecommunications companies advocating for antennas in Rhode Island. So why would the PUC not know about the significant lobbying of its sister agency, the DPUC? I did learn that Mr. McCleary was appointed to the DPUC by Governor Raimondo, was only there for 10 months, and was known for being a big fan of 5G. When I asked a DPUC administrator in August, "Why, if the DPUC doesn't regulate wireless," Mr. McCleary was even involved in the small cell sighting hearings, the response was, "Good question." Yet Mr. McCleary's LinkedIn profile states that the DPUC independently regulates broadband and wireless carriers. McCleary's profile also features his work towards implementation of autonomous vehicles, one of the hallmarks of 5G. Now, an article appeared in 2017, October 1st, in the Providence Journal, that Small Cells Sighting Act capped at $150 per pole per year, the price cities can charge phone companies to rent space on utility poles. So is Cranston renting out space on the telephone poles to telecommunications companies? It's clear from the details of my communications with multiple departments over the last six months that there's nothing clear about the process by which I am told I will be required to submit to pulsed-modulated microwave radiation at 60 gigahertz from my telephone pole. If my telephone pole has been rented out for an antenna, I assert that the goal of financial gain is short-sighted. It has been assessed by a number of communities listed in my submitted written testimony that properties with an antenna on a nearby pole lose value up to 20%. Residents will have their properties reassessed, and the accompanying loss of tax revenue to Cranston will far exceed the annual gain of $150 per pole. Further, who will fund the lawsuits? As has already been mentioned, asbestos, cigarettes, glyphosate, lead and gasoline, and paint are painful reminders of short-sighted promotion of industry for financial gain, ultimately costing immeasurably in lost health, lost lives, destroyed environments. It is also clear that municipal leaders are suffering under the erroneous consensus trans that because of the 1996 bill, the FCC can have its way, and that your hands are tied, but my colleagues have already mentioned that. In closing, allow me to remind you of the beauty of our Rhode Island Constitution, the power it provides and indeed demands of elected officials and residents to honor and uphold. Preamble: Looking to Almighty God for a blessing upon our endeavors to secure and to transmit the same, unimpaired to succeeding generations, unimpaired, yes, by freedom from assaulting microwave radiation, to secure and transmit to succeeding generations who have not been harmed as children with vulnerably thin skulls. The stakes are high. COVID and other matters have captured attention, while the duo of the FCC and the telecommunications industry continue their wanton quest. It is the path of least resistance to defer to the lie that our hands are tied. I will not tell my grandchildren that I took that path while their health was squandered in the name of Rhode Island's being ahead in a dangerous quest of ever faster. I'd like to ask what you will tell your grandchildren. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Claire.
Yes, good evening. I would like to go next. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
My name is Sheila Resiger. I live at 50 Malvern Avenue here in Cranston. I've lived there for almost 40 years. The serious and urgent issue that we're bringing to you tonight has unfortunately been largely neglected by public officials as well as the general public. The deployment of pulsed-modulated radio frequency microwave radiation, so-called "small cell wireless telecommunications facilities," WTFs, in Cranston and across Rhode Island. I first started contacting members of the Cranston City Council about this back in February. At that time, I was unaware of the 2017 Rhode Island Small Cell Sighting Act. I found that the public officials that I contacted were largely unaware about 5G at all, that it's being deployed in Cranston already and across Rhode Island, and that there's any responsibility on their part to do anything about it. As you just heard, the damages from these so-called "small cell antennas" to human health and the environment are substantial, as well as the damages to property values and the potential for liability lawsuits. The problem for city officials seems to be that, once they found out about the Small Cell Sighting Act and its seeming limitations on the efforts of cities and towns to prevent the small cells from coming to Cranston, they believed that their hands were tied. As you've been hearing, this is not the case. When the Small Cell Sighting Act was introduced into the General Assembly in January of 2017 and during the subsequent hearings in the House and Senate, it was primarily representatives from the telecom industry that testified to the members, of course, in favor of the law. No members of the public, having been kept in the dark about what 5G is and what the implications of its deployment are, none of them were there to testify against it. The act itself was written in violation of the 1996 U.S. Telecommunications Act. Further, in 2019, there were several federal court cases, which I detailed in the written submission I sent in last week, in which the court ruled that the FCC had overreached its authority in regard to preempting the right and responsibility of municipalities to protect their residents. On August 9th, 2019, the D.C. Circuit Court of Appeals, in its ruling in case 18-1129, stated that, quote, "The FCC failed to justify its determination that it is not in the public interest to require review of WTF deployments," and ruled that the order's deregulation of WTFs is arbitrary and capricious. Further, the Environmental Health Trust and the Children's Health Defense have recently brought lawsuits against the FCC alleging that the FCC was arbitrary and capricious for its egregious failure to update its obsolete and never adequate-in-the-first-place 1996 safety guidelines. For these reasons and many others, I have contacted my state senator, Joshua Miller, and my state representative, Joe McCaffrey McNamara, stressing that the Small Cell Sighting Act needs to be revoked with a new act in accordance with federal laws, precedents, and policies enacted instead, and asking for an immediate statewide moratorium on the deployment of these small cells. It is unconscionable that the wireless companies are deploying these facilities under the radar, so to speak, of most public officials and the general public. This deployment needs to be halted immediately for the sake of all residents, our children's health and future, and the quality of life in Cranston and Rhode Island going forward. Therefore, tonight, I am asking the Cranston City Council to step up and be the first town in Rhode Island to propose a resolution in support of a statewide moratorium on small wireless telecommunications facilities. If you are worried that this will prevent Cranstonians from easy access to the internet, be aware that there is an even better way: fiber optic cable to the premises. This technology is not only safe, but it's actually much faster, more secure, not a threat to privacy, consumes less energy, and doesn't go down in a power failure. What's more, Rhode Island is currently the state with the most fiber optic coverage at 84.2%. Please see our website, 5gfreeri.com, for in-depth information on this urgent topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Thank you for your presentation tonight. If you could just make those materials available to the clerk, and then she can send them to the full council.
Yes, I've already sent my written testimony, which includes some of what I just said here and other information as well.
Thank you, Sheila. Looks like we have Angel Lopez, who I wanted to speak. Clerk, if you could promote that person?
Yes, yes, Angel Lopez is the next one on our presentation list.
Oh, yeah, I know one.
Hello, can you hear me okay? I'm trying to see. I can turn on my camera. Hi. Okay. Good evening, Council President Farina and the rest of the city council members. My name's Angel Lopez. I reside at 41 Dorchester Avenue in Providence. I'm a member of 5G Rhode Island, and I have family in Cranston. I want to state for the record that my biometric information is not for sale. I am here to attest my experience regarding the impacts from a neighboring community of Cranston in regards to the Small Cell Sighting Act of 2017- in regards to the Small Cell Citing Act of 2017, which I will refer to simply as Title 3932. The act that was approved last September of 2017 allowed wireless transmission facilities to exist closer than ever to our residential neighborhoods. I'm going to name a few. In the 02909 zip code, a cell tower was deployed on Huntington Avenue to the right of the Route 10 on-ramp and is co-located on top of residential high rises like Only Tower Apartments and Pocasset Manor. Within the 02909... When within the 02920 zip code in Cranston, 4G antennas were co-located on the roof of Arlington Manor, and two towers were deployed on opposite sides of the baseball fields on that antique avenue. Specific to Silver Lake, these are some of the small wireless facilities that have made their way places of worship and the busy stores, bakeries, and restaurants. All of these new antennas are in constant around-the-clock operation 365 days a year once they are turned on, and that's a whole lot of brand-new radiation into our environment. Title 3932 also brought the deployment of a small wireless facility on the telephone pole across the street from my residence, and it's continuously bombarding me with pulsed modulated microwave radiation every time and all of the time I am inside my apartment. The only safety precaution that I can take is to not try to spend long periods time inside my apartment in order to reduce my body's absorption of the highly denno-biotic radio frequencies. If I compare the current deployment of 5G to something in the history of industry, it is as harmful to all living beings as leaded gasoline. I thought it would be easy to get a state agency or the FCC itself to come and test the antenna outside of my residence to check if the emissions were harmful and entering my apartment. But it's impossible based on the current law, Title 3932, which allows an authority to regulate itself. And in Section 1 of Title 3932, it declares the entity that owns or controls property suitable for co-locating SWFs an authority of that property. I reached out and submitted complaints to various state agencies only to learn that neither Rhode Island nor the city of Providence possess the necessary equipment to test emission levels on site. The Rhode Island laws that would regulate and enforce the operators of the existing state or municipal law have yet to exist, and as a result, all the state agencies I contacted said there was nothing they can do to help. In closing, there is a lot that can be done right from your city hall regarding the deployment of small cells. If losing your agency over the public rights of way of telephone poles is the barrier to declaring a moratorium to reclaim your public rights away, the monetary gain behind the deployment of 5G does not outweigh the public health impact associated with pole microwave radiation on the workforce and the student population. And health impacts are the reason you can no longer find leaded gasoline on the market. Thank you for creating and sharing this space and time to hear from residents and your neighbors on this matter.
Thank you, Angel. Okay, I believe that concludes the presentation from the 5G group.
I think there were two more people who planned to speak. I don't know if they're still on.
If they make it quick.
Steve Dahl, Steve Dahl and Chris Solar.
We are running a little behind.
If those two are no longer here, I suppose, then that concludes our presentation.
Oh, no, 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 I'm here.
Steven, okay, go ahead, Steven.
I'm sorry, I have a little technical difficulty.
Go ahead, Steven.
Um, let's see, I don't... I'm going to start my video here. Is that what I do? Is that working? Okay. Hi there. Thank you for making this space, as Angel eloquently put it. My name is Stephen Dahl. That's S.T.E.P.H.E.N. Dahl, D.A.H.L., 36 Diane Drive, Kingston, Rhode Island, 02881. Honorable Cranston City Council, I attest and affirm that the following statements are true and accurate. They are within my personal knowledge, and I respectfully submit my testimony to you. The... I'm from Kingston, Rhode Island, but the actions of each municipality impact the rest of the state. Do not allow 5G infrastructure to be built in Cranston. I oppose the implementation of all 5G wireless and radio frequency radiation transmitters and devices in public spaces. We must have a moratorium on 5G. In order to work, 5G must piggyback on existing 3G and 4G wireless technology, which along with Wi-Fi, has been proven to be unsafe. We live in the Wild West regarding wireless technology, where no relevant laws protect us from harm. The FCC, the governmental agency which is supposed to be protecting us, is instead promoting the telecom companies it is supposed to regulate. You can read all about it in a report by Harvard University School of Ethics, which you can find online. Search on Harvard Ethics Captured Agency. Once again, Harvard Ethics Captured Agency, and that report will come up. How do I know about this stuff in the first place? I enjoyed working at the Peacedale Library here in Rhode Island, at the circulation desk, until I began to get health problems, big time. Insomnia, dyslexia, memory loss, brain fog, anxiety, irritability, heart palpitations, stomach cramps, and headaches. I finally realized that the circulation desk, which was 10 feet from... It was 10 feet from the whole library Wi-Fi transmitter, which wireless connects over 16 computer terminals and personal devices, some running video, which has high bandwidth. We did not have Wi-Fi at home, however, because I had been a stay-at-home dad and had read something from the American Academy of Pediatrics, which told the FCC to update its inadequate radio frequency radiation standards. But that sort of went off my proverbial radar, and I was just doing my thing at the library, not really thinking about it. But at home, I had an Ethernet connection, which is just very easy to do. You just get the old-style modem, and it works great. I'm using one right now, and I get great video. It never cuts out. The city of Boston has also criticized the FCC recently regarding its lax standards, which haven't been updated since 1996. Where can you find peer-reviewed studies showing biological harm from wireless radio frequency radiation? By going to a website by Nobel Prize winner, Code Lure, Deppard Davis, who was part of a team that helped remove tobacco smoke from airplanes and other public spaces. That group is the Environmental Health Trust, and their website is ehrust.org. Once again, that's ehrust.org. And for regional information, a great site is Understanding EMFs by C.C. Dusette. EMF stands for electromagnetic fields. What you do is search on Understanding EMFs, a Google site. You have to put the Google site part in there, because there's a similar website that's not hers. Hers is great, though. And I go to that one. I also started a group, which is on Facebook, called Rhode Islanders for Safe Technology. That's Rhode Islanders for Safe Technology. My Facebook page has a change.org petition, which has over 125 signatories against the implementation of 5G in Rhode Island, which you can find also on my website. Also, our previous attorney general was... is very skeptical about it, about 5G. You can still have your home computer or device hooked up with Ethernet wires, which is safe, doing it through the wires. In fact, Comcast Xfinity, which is the largest internet service provider in the United States, says, and I quote, "Everybody uses Wi-Fi these days, and wireless connections are convenient, but they're not always fast. Cable connections like Ethernet will always be faster and more reliable than wireless ones," unquote. So not only is wireless harmful, but it also doesn't perform well as well as wired connections. Try it on your next Zoom meeting. Because our federal agency will not act, local governments must. And this is the only way it can happen, is through you. New Hampshire passed a bill to investigate 5G and its health effects. And Farragut, Tennessee, for example, has also called for a moratorium on 5G while it is studying, while it's being studied. The only way to protect oneself is to avoid radiation sources, which is increasingly impossible. Wireless radio frequency radiation harms fertility and children. Do not let them add 5G on top of the 3 and 4G. 5G is not a standalone frequency. It is highly toxic. Please pass a 5G moratorium for Cranston now. I have expressed no matters of mere concern, but solely matters of substance, fact, and law. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. And Chris, you should be in and ready to go. Take yourself off mute.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yep.
I'd like to just share my screen to wrap this up, to actually show some of the actual tree damage in Rhode Island. So I'm going to share my screen now. So can everyone see that?
We can.
All right, so this is a study out of Germany and from 2013. Tree damages in the vicinity of mobile phone base stations. So this is 3G and 4G. So research is already showing, reporting the impacts on germination, growth, and cell metabolism in trees. And these papers are indicating harmful impacts. From that paper, you can see that the side of the tree with the seven times higher radiation level is obviously sick with browning leaves and a thin crown. The side of the tree with less radiation is healthier. And we can see this right in Rhode Island. So I live in West Warwick, 28 Eddy Street. The yellow circles depict trees that I saw damages at the West Warwick Sports Complex, where a large cell tower is located. So all of these trees are exhibiting signs of illness and damage. All these trees down here at the lower level were removed prior to 2020. There used to be trees right next to the cell tower. Those were all removed, presumably because of health issues. This is the same complex. That's the West Warwick Cell Tower. These trees have thinning crowns. This tree on the right is almost totally dead. I just took this picture today. You can see the trees are still sick. This tree on the left side facing the cell antennas is browning leaves, thin crown. And that tree on the right is still very close to death. Here, this is an important one, because this shows that in the shadow of the RF radiation, the trees below the shadow, they're healthy. But once they get up above the top of the building and they're in the beam of the RF radiation, they start to get sick and stop growing. If people can see that. And, yeah, more trees a little further from the cell station. There's trees that are still healthy, but these young trees over here in the middle are sick. These trees over here are sick and dying. So obviously, something is going on. All of these trees are under stress from climate change and air pollution, but the ones closest to the cell tower are the sickest. Evidence in point, this is down by the Patuxet River in West Warwick, by the bike path. These trees are doing well. They're over 2,000 feet from the cell tower. So these trees are still under stress from climate change and other pollution. So there must be something going on here. With regards to 5G, this is a paragraph from an FCC report in 1997. The foliage losses at millimeter wave frequencies are significant. So that means at 5G frequencies, the trees are going to be absorbing the radiation, potentially causing harm. And I think there should be environmental research done on that. Thank you. Thanks to the council for taking time to hear us all. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak during public hearings?
Thank you very much for giving us the time to make all these presentations. We have concluded now, and have a good night and the rest of your meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you once again, if Council President may be real quickly as we move forward to the next topic on the agenda. Again, thank you to each and every one of you for having a lot of information come before the council. Obviously, that was... Some of the stuff has been emailed to us. I would say email it over to the clerk. She'll disseminate the information to us. And a lot of points that were made, that's something that we would have to look as far as a city. But again, I think this was more so of a point of information and then making sure that we can then move forward. Some of this would be more of a legal solicitor that could probably weigh in down the line, but this is some information that at least now they can take, and then we can circle back at a later time. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councilor Vargas. Anyone else in the public wish to speak on anything tonight? Let's see, you know what? Anybody raise their hand? I'm going to close that portion of the meeting. I'm actually going to... If nobody has any objections, go to the Diversity Commission update before we move on, because I know we're a little behind, and they've been waiting patiently. So I'm going to ask the co-chairs of the Diversity Commission, Director Oragian and Director... Inter-Director Kiora, if you guys would like to go on with your section of the evening.
Great, thank you very much. Good evening, Council President Farina and members of the council. Last week, I submitted, on behalf of the Cranston Diversity Commission, a written report with David Kioroa outlining an update on the progress of the Diversity Commission and some of the areas that we've been focusing on. Without, you know, reiterating the contents of that report in its entirety, I had summarized the previous report to the council that we made at the October meeting of this council and summarized some of the work that we had completed. And then I also outlined the progress that the commission has made since October. And basically, the focus of the work of the commission since October has been on the community survey. And I'm sure many of you are familiar with the survey. There were two different components to that, two different methods of disseminating the survey. One was done in a closed fashion with limited participation by residents that were invited to participate. And then it was also an open survey that was conducted over a period of approximately one month. Major Padalano, with the police department, executed that survey for us. He compiled the survey's results. The commission reviewed those results at the last in-person meeting back in February. And then our work was on hold for a few months because of COVID. We did have a meeting last month on Zoom, and we were able to have the results of the survey reviewed by the folks at One Cranston. And they analyzed the data and presented their findings to the commission at the last meeting. They had a report, a written report, prepared, and then they made some recommendations. So I'm going to stop at that point and introduce, from One Cranston, Caitlin Blankenship, and also Andrea Champagne, who worked with her, and hopefully they're able to join us now. I know they've been waiting patiently. Caitlin? I see Andrea.
Hi, everybody. Thank you, guys, so much for having us. We are very excited to have worked with the Diversity Commission to kind of analyze the data that we've collected from residents. from residents and be able to share that with everybody tonight. So we do have a PowerPoint presentation. I'm going to share my screen. Okay, there we go. And so I will just introduce myself for those of you that don't know me. I am Caitlin Blankenship. I am the Community Engagement Specialist for the One Cranston Initiative. And my friend here tonight is Andrea Champagne. She is the director, director of the Cranston YMCA and a very strong partner of One Cranston. And she is actually going to start us off tonight.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having Caitlin and I. I started when we presented to the Diversity Commission, just sharing very briefly about One Cranston and specifically what I feel it has brought to me as an organizational leader in the city. As you can see from the screen, it's a combination of residents, organizational stakeholders and different groups from throughout the city and surrounding areas. And I know for me, having the opportunity to connect with these groups and hear from residents, especially residents who maybe are not members of the Y, but being able to hear about their experiences in the city has been invaluable to me as an organizational leader. And I think the opportunity to reflect on ways that my organization maybe is not always the most inclusive or welcoming, even though I intend it to be, is so impactful in my, in my daily leadership. So I'm very thankful to be one of the stakeholders through One Cranston. And I thank Caitlin for inviting me to co-present this evening. When we presented in front of the Diversity Commission, I just started, Caitlin, if you want to go to the slide with the sort of ground rules. The Diversity Commission did a wonderful job of sort of working with the presentation guidelines, you know, acknowledging that this is data that we've collected that is showing us areas where we may need to grow and change and should grow and change to be open-minded, to come, you know, from a base place and acknowledge that it is a safe space. I know sometimes for me, you know, I can share as an organizational leader, we do a lot of surveys and sometimes you get that feedback back. And there's this element of like, oh, that's not true or that's not what we intended. And that can be hard. So really commend everyone on the Diversity Commission, as well as you folks here tonight for being willing to approach this work and see where we might be able to grow. So Caitlin, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thanks Andrea. That's, we definitely wanted to kind of start off recognizing that we did find that people are acknowledging that there is an issue in Cranston. Just like all cities, we are dealing with historic systemic racism. And so when residents were asked if they felt the city was effective at hiring, retaining and promoting people of color into various city positions, most people said no. And when asked if there were barriers for people of color specifically, most of the people said yes. So here we just want to acknowledge that most of the residents who took this survey, over 50% of them, did recognize that there is, you know, some things that Cranston can improve on with their hiring practices. And I do want to highlight in our presentation guidelines that many people in their specific comments mentioned that they're not expecting the city to sacrifice quality of a candidate over picking people of color. They expect quality in a person of color candidate, just as they would in any other candidate. So just some basic information for you. Most participants were female between like 45 and over. Mainly white. And you do see in, in, in specific comments that many of our white residents acknowledge that they might not know specifics of barriers that people of color may have faced. And they do recognize our own privilege as a white person. But they do again, understand that there is a systemic barrier in Cranston, just like there is one nationally. And we tried to break it up a little bit by ward for everybody to kind of take a look at. And you do see that Ward 1 and 2 had the highest percentage of participation. So we found that there were about three main categories that the residents felt were barriers. And we dive a little bit deeper into what that means. So people identified these three barriers, all falling under racism or systemic racism. Many residents stated a lack of trust towards the city. Feeling this general unwelcoming feeling in the city is a barrier for people to want to apply and keep a job in the city. And 51% of people who identified racism as a barrier noted the overall lack of representation is itself a barrier because people don't see themselves in those positions if they don't see somebody like them in those positions. So when addressing racial equity and inclusion, many residents really specified making tangible goals and sticking to them, being very open about those. 1 in 20 people expressed just wanting transparency in those goals and accomplishments. So people really want to be on board and see what is the city's plan and how is it happening? Some other kind of sub barriers that people specifically identified. One was media communication and outreach. So people felt that there was an overall lack of outreach for people of color. And many people found it very difficult to find jobs in the city, even if they were looking. Like they might not have found a post or they couldn't navigate the website, et cetera, et cetera. So most people did not know when jobs become vacant for the city departments via police or just or city. But the 18% that said that they do know when jobs become available found that these were the ways that they found those jobs. So they might have found it on a web search or they looked on the city website and they knew where to go. They've also checked newspapers and we got a lot of good feedback about billboard advertisements, as well as a little bit of social media. There is an overall perception in the city of general nepotism. You have to know someone to be able to get a job. And as a person of color, you might not know someone in a city position and therefore you feel like you are not going to get a job, so you don't bother applying. Some suggestions here were keeping the billboards and increasing social media usage in the city. I know you guys worked on updating your websites. I'd be curious to find if residents have, since this was taken, I'd be curious to find if residents have found the new website more helpful. But many people also kind of naturally suggested like a pathway, not just thinking about people you can hire right now, but how can we assert ourselves into the schools so that we are encouraging our youth as they're graduating from high school to go into college and to be on this pathway to entering city job positions? And so many, many people suggested some sort of pathway programs, more interaction with schools and youth, even just school visits or trips, et cetera. As well as just general community outreach. A couple of comments mentioned having like a open house for the firehouses, you know, fun events that people can go to and just become more comfortable and familiar in a setting. I'm going to let Andrea take over our next section.
So one of the things that we talked about in the previous slide that we mentioned when we did the presentation to the Diversity Commission was talking about those community events and if there were a way to make some of that presence a little bit more intentional in terms of talking more about those jobs. Being at the Y, the police and the fire department are always awesome about coming to our Healthy Kids Day and our open houses and coming to, you know, visit the kids. So more of that and I think more intentionality around those visits to really talk about the skills you need and the different things you can be building to really be thinking about those careers. Also, when we presented at the Diversity Commission, we were joined by Sophia Chan, who is a youth leader that was working with One Cranston over the summer. And of course Caitlin and I were super excited when she talked about how involvement in after-school programs had really been wonderful and a big boost for her, both coming from organizations where we work with young people after school. And she, we thought, made this really great correlation of sort of a positive type of nepotism. Sometimes that gets a really negative connotation. And certainly in the survey results, it might have been intended to be that way. But she talked about being in an after-school program and really developing some skills outside of school and also working with mentors that helped her when she got to be of a certain age, get her first job, be a reference for her, connect her with other opportunities in the city and talked about how they really helped her. And I think that sort of hearkens back to what we see in the survey results about creating those pathways so that our, our students who are coming through our schools really have the, get the opportunities that they're looking for if they're interested in exploring these careers. We do have some of those things already in place. Field trips, partnering with different programs that we already have in the city, our Youth Opportunity Zone work that we do through One Cranston. And then they talked about some tangible things too around trying to remove some of those barriers, making practice tests available, the opportunity to observe some of the training exercises or, or tests that they would need to pass in order to gain these certifications and get these jobs. And then as always in a survey component, not just about how can we recruit people of color for jobs in the city, but how can we also support them? And what are the steps that we need to take to make sure that we're also retaining, as Caitlin mentioned, what our residents are looking for, which is high-quality candidates for those jobs?
Thanks Andrea. So what we have talked about up to this point has been general and pretty even across the board to each department, so police, fire and city departments. This has, these were suggestions and comments made multiple times under each section. We did find just a very small amount of specific comments to each department. And so we have just a little bit of information here. So we actually received some positive comments from our police department. A lot of people really appreciate the academies that police offer. And they really like, like I said, like the billboard advertisements. I know they mentioned specifically were by the police department and they were very visible and noticeable. And so people really appreciated that. Other than again, just getting more diverse candidates themselves, people were generally pretty positive about our police department. For our fire department, people specifically listed the EMT certification as a barrier. And there was a few different types of suggestions from residents of ways our city can remove this barrier. Altogether, we could remove the certification. People suggested having the city pay for residents to be able to take the certification or any candidate to be able to take the certification because just paying for it and taking it is a barrier itself. And or making the EMT certification a post requirement. And that is fire department specific. For the general city departments, again, we kind of cover nepotism. But we found that under comments specific to Cranston city departments, nepotism came up a lot more than it did in other sections of the survey. And so again, practicing clear and transparency across the board and looking to create just a more welcoming environment for people. Online presence is definitely like something that people look for. Now we got the new website and we got to show it off, right? So with the help of our entire One Cranston team and the comments from residents within this survey, we came together with some next steps that the city can look to take that we feel are pretty reasonable and tangible. We figured in the next couple of years, it's important to keep our clarity and visibility with the city. And so creating like a strategic plan and sticking to it is definitely important. Some things that we're already starting to do that I think have been amazing and have gotten great feedback and we need to continue are things like our racial equity training, which we're so happy to have been a part of, that citywide training was amazing. Starting to think about assessments to identify barriers in retaining staff, which a couple of our One Cranston partners are actually beginning to look into themselves within their own organizations. And again, continuing to think about collaborative outreach. You know, the city has so many opportunities and resources. And how can we just connect to one another to strengthen those, to increase those opportunities for people? And including systems change that might be beyond hiring and retention. I know that that's mostly what this group has been put together for. But it's definitely good to think about some things that we have already done and want to continue to do. For instance, Lamas initiated the pride flag raising, which I believe is becoming an annual thing, though I think this year we were in quarantine. But that's amazing and, and those are things that the city can continue to do to become more equitable overall. We also suggested continuing partnerships with One Cranston to think about technical assistance. We have a lot of consultants that One Cranston uses to help facilitate our group and our work. They really give us different lenses and different skills that we are constantly looking for and we're always changing. So working together to find technical support, find an anti-racist organization that can help facilitate your work is a lot more, what's the word I'm looking for?
Beneficial?
Not the word I was looking for. Sustainable, that's the word I was looking for. Having somebody teach us the skills we need to own our work is much more sustainable than having like a specific person that's doing the job that should be done really by all of us. We should all be practicing these things within our organizations every day. And again, these people can come in with specific skills. So based on the feedback that we've received from residents, continuing racial equity and inclusion trainings and work, but also having a specialist that can help with that media communication and outreach can be really beneficial to the work to continue your image to the city. And so we have some three to five-year kind of goals. Continuing to update your plan because every year things change. You get new information, things happen. You realize you are great at communication now and you need to strengthen something else. So it's always good to update your plan. Continue investing in some sort of consultant. Again, to continue to sustain the skills in the Diversity Commission and within the city as a whole. And consider investing into a part-time diversity officer. Again, a specific type of systems change that could be implemented is considering to remove the EMT certification, which according to our last conversation in the Diversity Commission, I believe, is a suggestion that Mayor Fung is leaving with the new administration. And so we, we hope that that new administration takes that into consideration. As far as some long-term goals, continuing your updating and being visible to the public. Continue to invest in different types of consultants based on the needs of your group in that time. Expanding the role of the diversity officer. Continuing to collect data and information is very key and important, especially when you're thinking about investing in a consultant team because again, you might be great at hiring people of color in a couple of years. What do we need to sustain them within those positions? And so having that consultant team and getting feedback from your employees in the community will help us to continue that, that journey. And hopefully, the data that is being collected can be effectively used to make future important decisions, right? That data collected around racial equity really should be used as a lens for all of the decisions that we make. And so we have high hopes for the Diversity Commission. And I think that together with the community, these are very tangible things that could get done that would be very beneficial to our city. And I know I skipped through some things, so if you guys have any questions for me and Andrea, we would be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Kaitlyn. Thank you, Andrea. Thank you, Director Raisin. I would openly, open it up to the floor. If you could just stop sharing your screen format. There you go.
Council President David Carolla, may I speak?
Evening Director Carolla. You are more than welcome to speak.
Yeah, first of all, I would like to say good evening to you, Council President, and the rest of the council that is present and community members that are present as well. I want to say officially from the, on behalf of the Diversity Commission, thank you very much to the folks of One Cranston because it was very important for us to have a community partner that was going to be able to kind of digest the data that we received through the efforts of our community survey. Because I think that adds a lot of credibility to the work that we're doing. The other thing is that I think some of the suggestions that have been presented are terrific. But I would also like to ask an open question to you, Council President, and the rest of the council in the sense that I have a political will question, if you will. At this point, you know, the commission, we've been working as an advisory commission, we're all volunteers in the commission, even the, even the members that are staff members of the city of Cranston, we donate our time, we don't get paid extra for it. And we like it that way and we enjoy it and it's very rewarding because it's part of service. But we're entering a phase where, you know, we have, we have come to realize that we definitely need to have political will and also political direction because we're only advisory. So a lot of the things that need to happen now are really, you know, the ball is on the court of, of the policymakers, the decision makers. And of course, a lot of this work is going to be bridged into the new, new council and the new administration that is coming pretty soon. But next steps, my question would be, what do you folks, meaning the council, think that is a role now? Because originally, the commission was established and authorized and directed to work towards soliciting feedback and testimony from residents. And this, this, this presentation basically kind of completes that phase of the commission. So I think that a lot of the members from the commission would, from this point on, would like some clarity. Now, by no means I want to be misunderstood and think that, that I don't want to serve on the commission anymore. No, that's not what I'm trying to say. What I'm trying to say is that we really enjoy the work that we're doing and we want to continue to do the work. But at the same time, there's also a bit of a level of frustration from the commission members in the sense that we kind of reached a point where we hit a wall, where we need now the decision makers, you know, the elected officials to start, you know, making those decisions. We understand that there are very difficult financial times, but you know, racial equity is really a truly a community investment that even in these difficult times, you know, some funds, some funds need to be put aside to make it a reality and to make it a true social exercise in inclusion. So with that, I would like to close and Council President, I do want to thank you for giving me the honor and the opportunity to serve my state, you know, we're such a small state that serving at the commission level for the city of Cranston, now the second largest city in the state, is basically like serving the state of Rhode Island at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And I'll answer you directly. I mean, with the result of this survey, that's the real reason after the last Diversity Commission meeting, I wanted to present it to the full council, there's some short-term goals, some long-term goals, things we can then look at and basically decide how we can better, better utilize the commission going forward as the first phase has kind of been finished. So now it'll, it'll be where do we go from here with the Diversity Commission? How do we work together to continue to collaborate and work on all the good, the good learnings that have, that have been developed? And continue to focus on driving racial equity trainings, leverage grant opportunities, drive funding, and continue to implement some of the things that the commission has identified both the short and long term. And I know diversity is very important to many members of the city council. So as we work this as a body, I'm sure we will, we will come to a resolution on things we want to implement, things we can implement. Because not everything costs money. Some things are really cheap. So with that, I will turn it over to questions from the Cranston City Council. Council member Hopkins.
Thank you, President. I just wanted to make a comment to Kate Blankenship. Your presentation was phenomenal. And I thought that you probably got a lot of that from your experience at Cranston East when you were a student over there in certain history classes and also during your senior graduation presentation. So tonight, I'm going to give you an A+. Great job, Kate.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Councilwoman Brady.
Thank you, Council President. I share the same testament as Councilman Hopkins. I really appreciate the information. You know, it was, it was very insightful and I definitely will take that information as we go into the budget hearing, you know, next season. Unfortunately, there's a lot of great ideas that, you know, I like to, I want to do now, 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 but you know, often when I go to the mayor or administration, where, where's the money at? You know, that's, that's always the question. I think these are all incredibly important initiatives that we need to move forward on. Like Council President said, some can certainly be started without funds, but the ones that do require funds, I'd like to be there and support when the time does come and work with this, this committee, committee moving forward to help, knowing that, God willing, I'll be on the council this next term.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, first and foremost, Andrea, Kaitlyn, everyone in the Diversity Commission and involved with One Cranston, thank you for, for collecting these results and presenting them to us tonight. You know, I think, I think David touched on a really important point and this isn't a criticism of everyone, but we need elected officials who have the political will to take on systemic racism and that is going to cause difficult conversations. Some people will be upset. It will be an education for myself and for many other people, but it's incumbent upon us if, and I know we all strive to build, want to build a more equitable, inclusive Cranston for everyone. And that's going to be difficult. And I hope that as we move forward, we continue to build with our community partners, educate ourselves and, and work towards dismantling systemic racism here in Cranston. So hopefully, we can continue to partner together in the future to do that, everyone at One Cranston, the Diversity Commission. And, you know, fortunate, I'll be back on the council next, next term with several others and I look forward to continuing that work with, with many of you.
And discussion. Hearing done, I will flow this with, oh, Councilwoman Vargas, I missed you, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I'm sorry. I hit the raise hand feature, actually. Sorry. So one of the things that I also like to, to know is, once again, let me start off with actually thanking all the members of the Diversity Commission. And also, I'd like to thank the school department as well. We had the school department disseminate the survey out to the families of which the school department has emails to. I know I got an email asking to please, you know, take some time and, and complete the survey for my son's principal, for my daughter's school principal. So obviously, there was a few, you know, there were, the schools were disseminating that information. That was just one avenue of doing so. So I, I, I think that this Diversity Commission, I'm not sure when there was a diversity committee, commission, committee, I'm not sure, whatever it was named many years ago, whether or not there was a survey that was taken or not from the community. But I think this is important for all of us. A lot of us have spent a lot of our time doing, you know, putting the work together, trying to figure out what we can do, the direction to go into. I'm going to be honest with you, I'm not surprised with the type of response that we received from the survey. Kind of expected those numbers. And that was probable because that's the type of feelings that I was already getting while I was out in the community. Well, I, I've been in the community that I'm getting not only from families who have students at our schools, but from even some minority-owned businesses as well and people in general in our community. So I'm, I'm not appalled at all by the response of this, but I think because we have it before us, this is information that we should, and based on the recommendation, again, thanks one to One Cranston and Caitlyn and Andrea for all the work that you've done and obviously the two co-chair of this committee, is that I would actually like to make sure that this is also information that is readily available also on our, on our website and that we're able to provide that. We obviously have a new administration coming in. We have a lot of new council members. I know many have said that diversity is extremely important and their platform and, and I hope that that is the case. But I also want to make sure that we continue to establish the relationships based on this finding and we should have always been keeping a relationship with community organizations, right? To make sure that if there is a need where people do not know where they can go apply for jobs, at least for city jobs, how do we disseminate that information out? If folks don't know that the police department or fire department is also hiring, is where are, what are the, what are the the, the type of job search monster, indeed, things along those lines that we're utilizing, how can we improve it? Do we have a relationship with not just only the Latino media outlet, but also the Asian and the African-American media outlets as well? So there's definitely a lot of work to be done. I think we've had those conversations in our Diversity Commission as well, making sure, okay, what's the list? What do we have? A lot of it also pertains to budget, of course, make sure that we get that information out. But also, because we're in a tight budget, is working with community organization, whether it's the CCAP, One Cranston. I love the idea of even of an open, you know, open house at, in, in the fire department. I know we have the citizens that kind of be in the police department. But is establishing that relationship as well, even with, with religious organizations in their city. And it's not something that we should be doing right before recruitment starts, but it's a relationship that starts before that. That it starts with kids, obviously, people that live in, live in our city. We have the YMCA and things along those lines. So the analytics would definitely be interesting as well as to, I'm not sure we can or cannot do this, but putting this, this information on our website, but that the conversation doesn't stop here. Think having a diversity, I think Caitlyn might have called it diversity officer or a chief diversion inclusion officer. I forgot what was the correct term that she ended up using. But it's, it, there's definitely obviously a need for it because that diversity officer would obviously bring equality. We'd be able to promote not just equality, but reduce the discrimination within our workplace and, and schools and everything else along those lines. But we all know diversity is obviously extremely important. Now more than ever, and that we value the diversity in our city. I hate for anyone not to feel welcome in our city. And so I am all hands on deck to work with anyone and everyone to make sure that everyone in our city feels welcomed, regardless of how they look, their gender preferences, the disabilities that, you know, they may encounter, anything along those lines. My hope is that we have been, we got recommendations on the short term and then also like the long term, so on there. I know that the mayor had mentioned, I guess, recommended the EMT post requirement. But honestly, that's, that's something that we would have to talk to the fire department and have an open conversation when it comes down to their CBA, right? On new hires. And that's something that I think the fire department is already well aware of. Even increasing our diversion in the police department and in our city. I also understand that a lot of folks feel that on this survey, the nepotism is, obviously came out extremely high. It seemed like that was a common denominator for this. But that's, that's, our hope is to make sure that we change it, right? That we try to change those ideas and that we're able to provide as much as information and relationship that we can build with, within our, within our city. When there's a job that's open, as far as union jobs, I think we're very limited on what we can do. And if somebody puts a bid in for it, where it's really hard. But there's also positions that are appointments and those positions would be great to come to whenever that is. As I think that's up to the administration anyway. It's not something that I think we, as councilmen, may have a say on, on all of them, per se. But I, I think that everyone's time with this Diversity Commission is extremely important. And I'd love to, at some point or the other, even engage at one point, even the school committee members and the administration with conversations such as this one and the fact that we've had equity in, in, in diversity training throughout the entire city. I'm not sure about the school department. I, I can't say or speak for them. I'd be interesting to, to know that. I know COVID has, has hit us extremely bad. But some, somehow down the line, we need to make sure that we have a person who can either be a diversity officer or whether it's a consultant. And I'm not saying everything has to be grant funded. I think grant funding is great, but it's not sustainable. It's a life support item that it's only there for a limited of time. And with money being tight as we move forward on the federal side and state side, I want to make sure that we can try to allocate certain funds for it. And it's something that I will be, I look forward to working with the members of the council. Again, it's extremely tight. Budget is tight now. I know it's going to be next time, but we need to make sure that that our Diversity Commission and that the work that has been done continues to be done and it doesn't stop here. That it is not for a political reason why we're all doing this and why we're all talking about it. But it's because we really believe in it. We really believe in systematic change, restructuring, and that we really want to make sure that our city continues to be welcoming to everyone. So I'll, I'll kind of stop there. I'm sorry. I know we're, we're running late, but I just wanted again, just, just point that out to, to everyone on the call.
Thank you, Council President. I'll try to make it brief. Just a couple of quick points. First, thank, thank you for everyone on the commission for doing your work. Couple of things that I've been advocating for, for the last three or four years, primarily a couple of years ago when doing the safety committee work. We have a vocational school and a diverse high school in Cranston East. And I've been imploring that the, you know, the school department and some of the people involved in this, we should be recruiting our students from our student population. We have a vocational school that can train kids in, for EMT, swimming, even for police work. We, we could, we could introduce them at the, at that level. It won't cost us another dime and, and we can provide the, the resources. There's no reason why we can't get minority applicants well-trained before they get out of high school to, to serve as policemen, fire people, or in other parts of the city. So I, I think that, I think we need to encourage people and encourage youth to do these things. And we, I think activism should take that form. We need to encourage and preach to the kids and to, to bring kids up and say, don't be afraid to apply for a job. Just do it. Call the fire department. Why do you have to wait for a posting or you have to see a billboard? Call. When, when are you going to have recruitment period? Call, when, when are you going to have recruitment period? When you're going to do, provide some programs? We, we need to get our, our youth to, to do that and for people to just get out and not be afraid to just apply or ask. You don't, you don't just sit back. Jobs just don't appear on your lap for any of us. So I, I, I think we need to promote and we need to, you know, encourage people. I don't, I, I, I think that they'd find, I think a lot of people that are reticent about saying that there's inequality. I think they'd be surprised to find that a lot of people would be very welcoming in, in offering a job. I know I, I, I've seen it. I've seen a lot of changes. We keep, because of the collective bargaining situation, we can't just replace our workforce in a, in a moment. It has, there has to be some gradual change, but we can do things to promote. So I hope that that's part of it. I don't think it takes a ton of money to get people to actively recruit kids and promote and try to find ways to give them the resources to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Stikos, you next.
Thank you. I'd like to just thank the diversity committee for their work. I think it helps to publicize these issues and problems. And I would add that while the, the presentation focused on the police department, the fire department and other city departments, the school department's record is, is only a little bit better than the cities. With the last time I checked, the 4% people of color in employment and where the city, 3%. So I do think we have a lot to do. I think it's very good to hear, I think, all the members of the council supportive of better recruitment and hiring of qualified people of color. And I really think that the driving force for this has to come from the next mayor. Mayor, at the final analysis, is the one who does the hiring. So I would urge everybody to keep all the elected officials feet to the fire on this. You know, we can't let what's happened in the past, which is another committee that doesn't has good intentions, but there aren't many results to show for it in the final analysis. Thank you again.
Thank you, Councilor Stikos, Councilor Hopkins.
Thank you, President. Just as a point of interest, we've got 125 coaches in our school system. And I'd be willing to bet during my tenure as athletic director, we hired many minority coaches and we continue to do that. And I think that's the one step. If you want to get somebody into education, we've used that as a stepping stone to get in to the teaching system. So hiring of coaches of, of diverse population seems to be the first step. The other thing is, I think we already have the model. If you look at what the military does and all of us that are sitting on this panel tonight now have seen members of the military come into the cafeterias while we were in high school and they started recruiting. And I think the, the biggest percentage of population are minority students. I'd be willing to bet that the, the service, the military services are actively recruiting and they've been doing it for years. And I suggested recently that that's what our fires should be doing. That's what our police should be doing. That's what our education system should be doing. Getting into the schools, getting into the cafeterias, making their presentations so that the kids have an opportunity at an early age to see what these jobs are all about.
Thank you, Councilor Hopkins. Anyone else?
Council President, I, again, I would highly encourage this if possible to be available to the residents if, if that is possible. I know this is a survey that was done, it was done anonymously, but it would be great information really to have on our website and say, you know, we are working on making sure that we have, we, that, that the information that you have provided to us is being used, is being thought about, is being worked on. And the reason why I'm saying that is when I brought up the diversity commission work, someone goes, yeah, I took a survey, whatever happened to that? And so for me, I think we always to the people to be transparent and to put that information out there and say, this is what we've done. And this is what the recommendations may, may be. And obviously, understand as we've all said it, Councilman Stikos said it, everyone said it, that we need to, that this is all going to be up to the mayor, right? Whoever takes, takes office. So I would really say that if this, if this survey information, this data can be up there, can be uploaded to our site, even if it's just a link and it goes on to this. It doesn't have people's names, it was obviously anonymous. And so I don't see why we, why we can't do it just because folks are wondering where the survey results are. So I'm not sure if that's something that's doable or, or not.
I'll talk with the administration. Thank you, council member. Any other comments on this tonight?
Council President?
You may, Chris Peploskus.
Thank you, Council President. First of all, I want to thank everybody for putting together this survey and the presentation tonight from, from one Cranston and diversity commission. Phenomenal presentation, thank you very much. Just want to echo everything my colleague said. This is very important, the committee's important. Focusing on systemic racism is, is extremely, extremely important. And I know we keep saying that the next administration, you know, is going to have to take the ball and run with it. But I do know like Councilmember Brady, Councilmember Vargas, Councilmember Donigan, we're all going to be back here, you know, God willing, you know, next term. So I know the four of us will, will champion this and keep moving forward with it. And just want to thank you again for the presentation and, you know, we're not going to forget it and we're going to keep working on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Peploskus. Anyone else?
May I?
You may, Councilmember Jeanette, you may.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to thank the diversity committee and the one question for this work. I'm really happy to see this first step moving forward. And I wasn't really surprised about the results because as a woman of color and I live it, experience it and I know what it's like. So thank you for this presentation. And I do hope that the next council will be really working on, and the next mayor will be committed to have a line item in the budget for this work because we cannot have this presentation and, for the presentation and table it. So I do hope we can move forward and do something really beneficial for our city, for the community. And that's what I'm, I hope I can come back next year and committed to work on that and thank you for all the work that has been done toward this community, diversity, inclusion, what we need and ask for.
Thank you, Councilmember Jeanette.
Council President, David Cora?
Yes, Director Cora.
Yeah, I just wanted to say one thing, you know, with, with the term systemic racism. I, I know that's, that's the official term that is being used now, but, but I think that the better term to use would be systematic disadvantage to minorities. Because by the use of systemic racism, it also, it almost implies that all of us who are in government, that are, that are serving elected or appointed or, or higher because we're competent in, in our, in our, in our areas of, of work are also racist because we're part of that systemic system, if you will, being redundant there with the words. So I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that I think that that's not where we are, especially in 2020. Are there disadvantages? Are, are there disparities? Of course. But I, I'm a strong believer that, you know, racism as, as, as a word is something very strong and full of hate. And by no means have I actually met a person that is filled with that kind of a hate. So I, I think it's systemic, you know, disadvantages that we need to work together to, to, to make the, the playing field and equal feel, an, an equal playing field. I just wanted to, to note that because it was just bothering me. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Anyone else?
May I?
You may, Caitlin.
No, that's a niece.
Oh, my niece, sorry.
I can go first.
Yeah, I would like to address what the director, David Cora? So I understand what you said, but that's the problem we have. We always afraid of addressing the, the real issue. We are in denial all the time. So this work has, that's a survey and that people speak about it. So we cannot be afraid of to talk about it. The first thing is we are willing to do something about it. So you need to, to call it the name. The name is exist, you may not be racist, but it exists. So we need to acknowledge it exists and do something about it. It's not, we're not in a way to be comfortable. So we need to be uncomfortable to get things done. So that's what I want to say.
Thank you, Caitlin.
I just wanted to comment quickly on Councilman Stikos mentioning the school department. I will say that though that wasn't the goal of this survey and for those of you that might have seen it, it specifically asked questions around the fire, police and city departments. There were a lot of comments that were like unsolicited about the school department. So that's, you know, again, it wasn't the goal of this particular survey, which is why that's not in like the presentation. But there were a lot of comments from residents that mentioned the schools in, in their comments.
Thank you.
I'll chime in on that real quickly, actually, Caitlin. You're, you're absolutely right on this. I, I think that diversity, I think so.
I don't know who that was, but we'll just.
Ron and I, I'm, I'm killing you over there, huh? I'm so sorry. It's Thomas speaking. Is it me?
Did somebody cut out? I.
It's Thomas. This is Thomas. Sorry about that, buddy. Sorry, I'm talking too fast for you. I'm sorry, buddy.
No.
So pretty much what, what I'm trying to say is that I think one of the things that diversity commission decided to, and please correct me if I'm wrong on anyone that was on the committee that's, that's on the call, is started to focus on a few things. And then the idea is to get that data, have that available to us. And then probably after all these conversations that we've all been having is down the line. Also going that down the line, meaning years, but the next step would also, I, I, my hope was obviously when we've had the conversation to then start off with also the schools. Because as I, when I, when I spoke, I also said it, obviously, the school department is obviously a, a need. And I'm not talking about county educators, not kind of teachers aid, just as in the education. It's, we need obviously folks to work in our education department that are also teachers in, in the administration. But that may be definitely something worth doing another survey down the line, assuming that we still all stay active and hands on deck and make sure that we're all working together for, for the better of, of Cranston and for better of the commission to continue going. So that may be worth, worth doing for the next, for the next round as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Vargas. Anyone else? So on this topic, we've just been saying, you know, Councilmember Peploskus just brought up a good point. Five of us, five of us will be retired from the Cranston City Council at the end of this term, no matter what happens. Four of you will be continuing on this body regardless of what happens. So I look for, I look to Councilmember Brady, Councilmember Donigan, Councilmember Vargas and Councilmember Peploskus to continue, to continue all the good work that this council has done over the last four years to really drive equality, work to end systemic racism and, and try hard to continue the work that we started. I know whoever the next mayor is, this will be a pillar for them. And we'll, we'll see what 2021 brings. Thank you to the diversity commission, election of city officials, building appeal board, reappointment of Lou Petrucci, with a term ending August 24th, 2025. A motion approved?
Motion approved. Second.
Under discussion. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
House Speaker Stikos? House Speaker Hopkins?
Yes.
House Speaker Vargas?
Yes.
House Member Jermaine?
Yes.
House Member Donigan?
Yes.
House Member Brady?
Yes.
House Member Peploskus?
Yes.
Council Vice President Frickio?
Yes.
House Speaker Freina?
Yes, under executive communication, important hiring special, special counsel consultants, you all received that this afternoon. Does anyone have any questions on the legal fees report? Hearing none, I'll move on from that. Council President communications, since it's 9:15, I'm going to skip Council President communications for the month. Councilmember Communications, Councilmember Vargas.
Yep, okay, hello?
You're up.
Oh, okay. Give me one second, I'm sorry. Just bringing the document up. Well, one of them was actually already discussed, Council President. So the other one was pretty much Sanders School that I have left on there, which is the administration may have received a letter. I'm not sure if it also went to any of the other council members or the citywide council members. Representative Millet also reached out to me. Pretty much what happened was we, we have, we have a neighbor who reached out that lives next door. She's a neighbor of Sanders School who had said that there was people playing in, in, in the building or, you know, just right around it and throwing stuff at the building as well. There was rodents in the area. And so I just didn't know if there is any way as far as can we confirm that that building is fully in, in intact? And I just, I'd hate someone to really get hurt or have anyone in the actual building itself. And if we can have someone, Public Works or so, take a look as far as voting control in that area. And voting control has also been in an issue around, around the city and even obviously throughout different areas in Ward 1. But walking through, through that area, voting control was not only mentioned to me by one person, but by a few folk, a few neighbors. So with the administration to Director Perillo, if, if you don't mind letting Director Mason know if we can do anything on, on the rodents around that area and also the city checkout Sanders School.
As far as I know, the building's secured, but we'll double check that. And I'll have Ike Gucci on the voting issue.
Perfect, thank you, I appreciate that, thank you. And I'm not sure, did you receive a letter from the state representative? I'm just make, confirming that because I know he sent out a letter, he said he was sending it out to the administration as well. But I can follow up with him just to let him know that it was being discussed today.
Sure, I, I did not receive the letter, but we'll follow up.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Donigan, I believe you have one on bike path trash?
Yes, thank you, Council President. One, Director Perillo, I, I do want to say thank you for the work that was done around the bike path down at Harmon Avenue. That was cleaned up. And I appreciate it and I know the, the residents appreciate that. But in general, I, I've started to get quite a few emails and phone calls about the cleanliness of the bike path and there being a lot of trash. And I'm just wondering, you know, what, like what, what the schedules are for, for clea, for, for cleaning there? If any cleaning is going on? The, the possibility of potentially, you know, putting some receptacles along the bike path at certain places? You know, the possibility of, of things like that?
I know Tony has a set schedule. I know obviously in the summer, we have a lot more people utilizing it and our resources are short with trying to maintain the fields and everything else. So I know Tony's guys are out there as much as possible. I don't know the answer about the receptacles. I don't know if that would be something that he'd be interested in doing to keep track under control, but I can, I can follow up with Tony in one.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it for Councilmember Communications tonight. So if there's anything crazy. Hearing none, we'll move on to all business. There is none. Reduction of new business, I'll take a motion to send all the new business to the appropriate committee.
So moved.
Motion is second, under discussion. Hearing none, Clerk, please take the roll.
House Speaker Stikos?
Yes.
House Speaker Hopkins?
Yes.
House Speaker Vargas?
Yes.
House Member Jermaine?
Yes.
House Member Donigan?
Yes.
House Member Brady?
Yes.
House Member Peploskus?
Yes.
Council Vice President Frickio?
Yes.
Council President Freina?
Yes. City council's next regular monthly meeting will be held on September 28th, 2020, if there's no additional business coming for the city council.
Council President?
Yes, Councilmember Peploskus.
I just want to thank Councilmember Vargas for having this meeting start at 6:30. If not, it'd be almost 10 o'clock.
Yeah, I think we're going to do this the rest of the year as we discussed. It's a, it's a nice time to start. We'll just have to make sure when we do special meetings, we start them at 5:45 instead of 6:00.
I like it.
Thank you.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, have a great night.